Hey everybody, welcome back. Thank you so much for being here for our session number fifteen on the Book of Joshua. I want to say thank you so much for being part of our Bible study every Tuesday night at six thirty. We want to invite you to go to our website, our website page at WhitestoneChurchTX.com. You can download our videos from previous studies there. You can get our nightly notes. You could also contact us and give us your email address and we'd be happy to add you to our weekly email list and make sure that you are receiving all of our information. So God bless you. Thank you so much. Grab your Bible, open up to Genesis, chapter ten. Grab your notes. We will be on session fifteen or part fifteen of your notes. The cover page is the same. The highlighted section is what we will be covering tonight. And let's get started. So we'll pray and just want to say thank you so much for joining us tonight. Father God, we love you and God, we ask for your peace and for your wisdom, your creativity, God. We ask for your joy. Father, we just ask that you would be honored by our time here tonight and that God, that we would know, that we know, that we know that you are God and you are in control. And so Holy Spirit, take us on an adventure through your word in the mighty name of Jesus. And everybody said, amen. Thank you so much for joining us. We are in a little sidetrack of the Book of Joshua. We have been talking in previous weeks, for the last three weeks or so, about the Genesis six incident where fallen angels come to earth. They breed with women, the daughters of men, and the Nephilim are born to them. This is the fall. This is the rebellion. This is not just the fall in the Garden of Eden, but this is the fall when God's people are in jeopardy. We know that God has a plan. God sends a worldwide flood. Noah and his family are the only eight people that survived the flood, not because of any other reason, but the rest of the world rebelled against the grace and the mercy of God Almighty. And so we have here, when we're picking up in Genesis, chapter ten and eleven, we see Noah and his family coming off of the boat. We see them worshiping God. Then we get towards the end of chapter nine and ten and we realize that Ham, one of his sons, violates his father's wife. He violates Noah. And we see the birth of a corrupt lineage. We see the lineage of Ham begats. Ham has a son named Kush, C-U-S-H, Kush, begets Nimrod. Nimrod is the leader of the rebellion at the Tower of Babel. So we're gonna, we're gonna pick up there. We'll also journey through to see the offspring or the lineage of Shem, S-H-E-M. Shem is the, is the son of Noah that follows God. Ham is the corrupt son that doesn't follow God. He rebels. And Japheth is somewhere in the middle. So we'll look at these two bloodlines. We'll look at these two seeds. One of the things I want us to remember is that there's a bloodline that brings the Messiah. And the bloodline is preserved through Noah, through Shem, all the way to Jesus. We will also see in the garden in Genesis three where Satan has his own bloodline, his own corrupt seed, if you will. And he is also trying to bring a lineage, a worldwide Antichrist, a worldwide rebellious leader. And he does that with this guy named Nimrod, but we'll see how God ultimately always prevails. God always has the first word and the last word. God's will is always accomplished. So let's dive into Genesis, chapter eleven, and let's look at the Tower of Babel. But as we do that, I want, I'd like for you to open your notes. I put in here five different spreadsheets or colored graphs, if you will. This comes from a study of the Genesis Bible study with Chuck Missler. So anything that, if you want to do a real in-depth study on this book, go to Koinia House, K House, Chuck Missler, Google anything Chuck Missler, Koinia House, khouse.org. And you can download a ton of his stuff. You can purchase stuff. They have stuff on the internet, YouTube, free stuff. But it's really, really good. So I wanted to bring up these charts because I just kind of want to look at the ages of people. And then when you look at Genesis, chapter five, and you look at Genesis, chapter ten, you'll see these genealogies. And I know in our Bible, when we read genealogies, that so-and-so begat so-and-so, begat so-and-so. It gets tedious. It gets bored, boring. We don't understand why did God really need to tell us all this information? There's great depth to that information. So here's one of the graphs. If you'll look at this first graph in your packet, it says the average age before the flood of Noah is nine hundred and twelve years. The average age of mankind was nine hundred and twelve years. So at the very top, we'll see the first ten generations of men in the Bible. We have Adam, then we have Seth. We skipped Cain and Abel because obviously Abel is killed. Seth replaces Abel. Cain departs and is not considered part of the godly heritage, the godly lineage of Jesus Christ. So I just wanted to bring out some points on these spreadsheets. So the first one is just the average age of mankind is nine hundred and twelve years. And this will show you from Adam to Noah. Now that timeframe is about two thousand years. And that is something that we just need to grasp, that from Eden to the flood is about two thousand years. From the flood to the birth of Christ is another two thousand years. And from the death or the birth of Christ to today is two thousand years. Biblically, the world is six thousand years or so old. When we compare that to what the world wants us to believe with evolution of the billions and billions and billions, we see this great confrontation to the word of God. So when we study the Bible, we can easily grasp the age of the earth based upon the lineage and the genealogy that's listed there for us. So turn your page. This is just some good information. After the flood, the second, the second graph, after the flood, the average age dropped significantly. So you'll start to see different men that lived before and after the flood. Now on your graph, it's only going to show two. So it's kind of interesting to think who lived before the flood, during the flood, and after. There's only eight people. The two on your graph follows the lineage of Jesus again. Noah was about six hundred years of age when God flooded the earth. Noah lived another four hundred years, or about three hundred years, I'm sorry, after the flood. He lived to be about nine hundred and fifty years. So can you imagine being Noah, seeing the earth for half your life, living a year on the ark, going through the flood, and then seeing the earth and creation for the next half of your life? It must have been mind-boggling. The next person is Shem. Shem was about a hundred years of age when God flooded the earth. The Bible says that Noah had his three sons at the age of five hundred, Shem, Japheth, and Ham. At the age of six hundred, God floods the earth. So Ham or Shem lives to six hundred years after the flood. And so we'll see that his lifespan was about six hundred years total. But just the idea that he was a hundred years of age when God floods the earth, he's on the ark for a year. He lives another four hundred years or so on this side of the flood. So when you look at that, you could just start to see the genealogy that's listed in Genesis ten, and you could graph and see the ages of mankind. Now here's some interesting facts. Noah was alive at the same time that Abraham was birthed. Now, this is where the genealogy gets wild because you start to think, okay, well, where was Noah living? Where did Shem go? Where did Ham go? Where did Japheth go? What's up with this Tower of Babel? What, what is, what is happening in the world? Well, on this graph, if you look biblically, and I never, never really even considered this until about two days ago. Well, really yesterday, when I found this graph, but Noah lived to be, Noah was somewhere in the eight hundreds of his lifetime when Abraham is born. So just to imagine that Noah is around when God births his nation, Father Abraham, is pretty mind-boggling. It's pretty mind-blowing. So when we look through this, this just gives you an idea. The next page, and I apologize if your booklet's out of order. I may have printed this differently. But if you look at the next, so you may have to find the graph that I'm on. I apologize for that. The next one is Jacob could have received third-hand what happened in the Garden of Eden. So when we get to Jacob, we see that Shem could have been giving Jacob information about what happened from the garden. Shem would have gotten his information from Noah. Noah would have gotten his information from his dad, Lamech. Lamech would have got that from Adam. So I know that's a little confusing, but, but just to think, if your great-great-grandfather could have gotten information from Adam himself, the fact that these, these stories and this heritage can easily take us into the life of Abraham and Jacob of the Old Testament is pretty mind-blowing, just to think that Adam could have easily told Lamech his, his, you know, tenth gener- or ninth generation down. Lamech is the father of Noah. He could easily have shared the stories with his son that his grandfather or great-great-great-great-grandfather shared with him. Shem, Noah would have shared those with his sons on the ark, and one of his sons would have shared that with Abraham, who then could have very easily shared that with Jacob. It's pretty, it's pretty interesting as we look through that. The last graph you have is Adam was alive, and this is where I got out of order. I apologize. Adam was alive at the same time that Noah's father, Lamech, was alive. And so look through those graphs. It's just some, some good information for you. But I think that you'll find it very interesting how God preserved his history, how he preserved the stories of the garden, preserved before the flood and after the flood. So before we jump into this study tonight, I really want you to grasp and really listen again to some of our past studies because understanding life before the flood. Life before the flood consisted of fallen angels mimicking gods and goddesses on the earth. Fallen angels who rebel against God. They follow Lucifer. They come to earth. They mate with women. They create offspring that's larger than life. These are the giants of the Old Testament. They start to corrupt mankind with the art of seduction, the art of warfare, the art of witchcraft, the rebelling against God. They start to pervert mankind. Now this fall is extremely important to our Old Testament understanding. Now, when Genesis six is written, it is written by Moses, and Moses is on the Mount Horeb getting the Ten Commandments from God. He's getting, getting the history of Genesis. He's writing Genesis. He is being downloaded from God, all this information. So when we see this, to get, to get information from God himself, our understanding of the Old Testament, I think, is much more broad and much more in-depth than maybe what we just learned in Sunday School. The reason that some places or some denominations or some churches don't want to teach what the Bible says is because it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not just sugar-coated and bumper sticker theology and religion. You have to dive deep into the word of God. And so that's, that's the reason for this study, is to dive deep into the word of God, really glean from it what it says. So pre-flood life is very different than today life, with the exception that Jesus says that his return will be like the days of Noah. So the return of Christ are going to mimic the days of Noah. And so I will pitch to you that fallen angels are still active on the earth today. Fallen angels are still corrupting mankind's DNA. Fallen angels are still mimicking superior life form, gods or goddesses to be worshiped. Fallen angels are still up to the game plan, the battle plan of hell itself to pervert, corrupt, and disrupt God's creation, mankind. So let's find the first time that that happened post-flood. So let's grasp this. Noah and his sons and their wives come off of the ark. Now, I don't know about you, but they've been on the ark for over a year. The Bible says it rained for forty days and forty nights. They were on the ark for seven days before the first raindrop. It rained for forty days, forty nights. They're on the ark another three hundred plus days, floating around, waiting for all the water to dissipate, for their boat to land on solid ground. And they are tired of the boat, yet they are thankful for the boat, if you will. They come off of the ark. God gives them the command, and we'll read this verse in a little bit. He says, "Go forth, be fruitful, multiply. Get away from the ark." Now, it's interesting to think of where the ark landed. The ark landed, according to the Bible, on Mount Ararat. And it makes sense that the ark would have landed on a mountain or a mountain range. It would have landed on high ground because obviously the water's going to lower. And as it dissipates, the uncovering of mountains would be first, and the lowlands would be second. But it's interesting that the boat launch or art, the ark settles there. And I think it's because God didn't want them to stay close to the ark. He wanted them to go forth, be fruitful, multiply. He gives them this, this command in Genesis eight. So when Adam and Eve were removed from the garden, they wanted to stay close to the entrance, just in case God changes mind. But God says, "No, go forth, be fruitful, multiply. Get away from the garden." Noah and your sons, get away from the ark. Go dominate the earth. Go spread the word, the love of God around the earth. Don't just stay in one place. So we get to Genesis, chapter ten. We understand that Ham has a son. One of his sons' names is Kush. Kush has a son named Nimrod. Now Nimrod, in Genesis, chapter ten, verse eight, in your Bible, it says Kush begat Nimrod. He began to be a mighty one on the earth. Nimrod began to be a mighty one on the earth. He was a mighty hunter before the Lord. Therefore, it is said, "Like Nimrod, the mighty hunter, before the Lord, and the beginning of his kingdom was Babel." Now, on the surface, this sounds like a compliment to Nimrod, that, oh, he's a great, a great hunter before the Lord. It actually means he's a great hunter against God. He is hunting God's sons. He is actually hunting his uncle Shem and Shem's lineage. He hates God. He hates God's plan. He is in rebellion against God. He is a hunter before God. Now, he's not just hunting animals. He's actually hunting mankind. This is the first glimpse of an Antichrist figure in scripture. This is the first attempt of Satan for worldwide dictatorship, for worldwide dominance, if you will. Satan understands that Shem is following God. He corrupts Ham in the corruption with Ham's interaction with Noah. And now he has perverted the, the offspring of Ham. And we have a lot of information outside of the Bible and extra biblical texts, historical information on the life of Ham and the culture of Babel or Babylon. So when we get to the Tower of Babel in Genesis, chapter eleven, let's start in verse one. And here's kind of where we'll start tonight. Now, the whole earth had one language and one speech. The one language means obviously one, one dialect. That one speech means they're in unity. Everybody's kind of achieving the same thing. Everybody's on the same page. And it came to pass, as they journeyed from the east, that they found a plain in the land of Shinar. Now, this would be above Jerusalem, like above the promised land. This is up, I believe, towards Syria, somewhere in modern day. This is, this is over in the Middle East. They journeyed, they journeyed from the east. They found the plain in, in the land of Shinar, and they dwelt there. Then they said to one another, "Come, let us make bricks and bake them, and bake them thoroughly." They had brick for stone and they had asphalt for mortar. And they said, "Come, let us build for ourselves a city and a tower whose top is in the heavens." Let's build a tower. Let's build a city. And then here we go. So we get the third step. "Let us make a name for ourselves, lest we be scattered abroad over the face of the whole earth." Now, who are they worried that will scatter them? Who are they building a name against themselves? And who are they, who are they trying to impress? The whole earth has one language. The whole earth is in unity. The whole earth has one speech. It, it has one agenda, if you will. This tribe of people after the, after the ark, and we're, we're a couple hundred years away from the flood. This isn't just like the next week. This is generation after generation. But this group of people wants to build a name for itself against God. They're following Nimrod, who is against God. Nimrod is warring against God and his agenda, his people. When it says they're going to build a tower to the heavens, it doesn't mean that they're necessarily going to build a physical structure bigger than, say, the Eiffel Tower or the Sears Building in Chicago or, or, you know, whatever, you know, giant skyscraper that we have today and quote-unquote, inner heaven. But what it means is that they are going to build a tower, one, to protect themselves from the flood if God ever decides to flood the earth again. Two, they want to build a name for themselves, not God's name. So this tower into heaven is not just a physical structure that wants to go higher than any other structure, although it did. But it's also talking about wanting to get into the heavenly realm through spiritual warfare or witchcraft. It's tapping into occultic religion or occultic practice to dominate the spiritual realm. Nimrod was known for his perversion. He is known for his wife, his mother, his child. He is known for his worship of pagan deities. He is known for being Satan's Antichrist. Now, this concept has kind of been dumbed down in some of our, you know, Sunday School lessons where we just say, hey, they were just trying to build the tower. They were going to take some, you know, some swords and some bow and arrows and go kill God. No, they wanted to tap into occultic power that was taught them by the fallen angels, that was taught to cultures before the flood and after the flood. Fallen angels are still today trying to teach us how to tap into the dark side or the fallen realm of the Antichrist or Satan himself. This idea of entering into heaven is to overpower God through evil, not just a physical building with physical swords and weapons. But this, this idea is still here today. So as we look at this, it says, hey, come, let us build a city for ourselves whose tower is top is in the heaven. "Let us make a name for ourselves, lest we be scattered abroad over the face of the earth." The last thing this group of people wanted to do was to go and, and go where God wanted them to do, to go out. So here, here's, this is a lot of information. Let's, let's read the next few verses. "But the Lord came down to see the city and the tower, which the sons of men had built. And the Lord said, 'Indeed, the people are one, and they all have one language.'" One meaning in unity. One language, obviously, meaning in speech, dialect, understanding. One, 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 so, so that one language is, is where the world wants to head today with, when we say like a one-world government, that would be they're, they are one. A one-world way of education, a one-world way of democracy or dictatorship or rule, if you will. One-world currency, one-world religion. This is, this is the same thing that's going to happen in Revelation in our future. This same thing is, is here. And so God comes down in verse six. He says, "Indeed, the people are one, and they all have one language. And this is what they began to do. Now, nothing that they proposed to do will be withheld from them. Come, let us go down and confuse their language, that they may not understand one another's speech." God's not in fear of them. He's not in fear of an overthrow. He's in fear. God's not in fear, but God is going to come down and disperse them. Because when God says he came down to the city, what God is doing is the same thing that he's going to do in, in future chapters with the city of Sodom and Gomorrah. So let's, let's take the story of Sodom and Gomorrah and liken it to the Tower of Babel, just real quick. If we remember the story of Sodom and Gomorrah, Lot, who we'll see comes to the, to light in the first mention here in the next chapter or so. Lot is the nephew of Abram or Abraham. And Lot and his wife choose the good land, and they go to a perverted city named Sodom and Gomorrah. Now God says, hey, Abraham, I'm going to destroy Sodom and Gomorrah. Now Abram or Abraham says, hey, God, listen, if I go to the city and I can find fifty good righteous people, will you not destroy the city? God says, sure. And he comes back. He can't find fifty. Hey, what about forty? And what about thirty? And what about twenty? And what about ten? And God says, hey, enough is enough. I've already searched the hearts of the city. Abraham, I know you think I'm going to unjustly destroy them, but I've already searched everybody's heart. The same thing that God did before the flood. How cruel was it, God, for God to flood the earth? He'd already judged everybody's heart. He already knew that Noah's preaching would return zero converts. He already knew that Noah's prophesying on God's behalf for a hundred and twenty years would, would result in zero conversions, but he still told Noah to preach anyways. He knew with Sodom and Gomorrah, hey, listen, if you go to try to find fifty, forty, thirty, twenty, ten righteous people, Abram, I've already searched their hearts. It's not going to happen. God, when it says God came down and to the city and the tower, it's not just he came for a tour. He didn't just like, oh, yeah, show me. So how many two-by-fours did you use? And how wide is the base? He, no, he's searching the heart of mankind. So, so here's the summary of the Tower of Babel. The Tower of Babel is led by a guy named Nimrod. This is one of the first cities that he built. Nimrod hates God. Nimrod and his wife Samiris and their son Osiris or Horus, whichever, you know, they are evil people. They are pagan, occultic. They are tapping into the heavens, not heaven where God lives. They're tapping into the supernatural realm of witchcraft and occultism, sacrificing of humans, sacrificing of babies, the perversion of sexuality. All sorts of evil vileness are in the Tower of Babel. The world is united. They have one language. They have one currency. They have one government control. They, they are one, one educational system. They, they are one and they are unified. And they are taking this message around the world. Now, if you think about Christianity being taken around the world, God wants us to take the message around the world. Nimrod is a hunter of mankind. Shem and his offspring are the only ones following God. Now, who is Nimrod and the people of the Tower of Babel? Who are they wanting to destroy? They're wanting to destroy Shem and his lineage, his sons and their sons and their sons. And ultimately, we'll see that Shem is the grandfather to Abram or Abraham. Now, the reason God comes to confuse them, he says, hey, look, let's go down, let's confuse their language, that no one may understand each other's speech, or else they'll achieve what they're set out to do. God wasn't in fear of Nimrod storming the gates of heaven. He is concerned that Nimrod and the people will hunt down Shem and destroy the lineage of Jesus the Messiah. The same thing that's happening before the flood is happening after the flood, just in a different way. So when we grasp what Satan's agenda is, Satan's agenda until the birth of Christ was to kill the Messiah, pervert the lineage, to destroy the baby that would destroy him. After the birth of Christ and after the death of Christ, the resurrection of Christ, Satan cannot destroy Jesus or the Messiah, but he's now out to destroy his children, you and I, or believers in Christ, and strip us of our power to prevent, that would disrupt Satan's rule and reign, if you will, to come in Revelation. So I know that's a lot, but I, but I hope we're putting this together. So here we go, verse, verse nine, or verse eight, Genesis, chapter eleven, verse eight. "So the Lord scattered them abroad from there over the face of the earth, and they ceased building the city." Therefore, the name, the name of the city is called Therefore, the name, uh, the name of the city is called Babel because the Lord confused the language of all the earth and from the Lord, uh, and from there, the Lord scattered them abroad over the face of all the earth. Now, this is where the Bible gets interesting because we'll start to put things together. I wanna read this next passage or this next uh excerpt. This comes from a guy named Dr. Michael Heiser. And Michael Heiser has written two really profound books. One's called The Unseen Realm. One is called Mount, uh, Reversing Mount Hermon. Uh, he works for, or used to work for Logos Bible Software. Uh, he is a scholar. I wanna read, um, this thing because in your notes it says nations divided. Now, at the Tower of Babel, we have to understand what happened. When God divided mankind, he divided them by language. But he also scattered them abroad the face of the earth. So he sent them to regions that are ruled by sons of God, angels. Now, just because God gives you a gift or God gives you something doesn't mean he always takes it even when you rebel against him. That same concept is true when it talks about different rulers of this world. Different rulers on planet earth. So if you'll run with me on this concept, that fallen angels have territorial rulership over the earth. Fallen angels were originally given a position, a territory, a city, a place, a country to rule on God's behalf. In the rebellion, they rebelled against their father and they will be held accountable for that. Now, I wanna read this excerpt, then we're gonna read two passages out of Deuteronomy. And hopefully we can put this together. So here we go. Nations divided in your notes, let's read together. The idea of holy ground is an important element of Israelite theology. This phrase is used when Moses is in the presence of the angel of the Lord and the God of Israel at the burning bush. And when Joshua meets the angel of the Lord. More broadly, the idea derives from uh, Deuteronomy thirty-two and Deuteronomy four, where we learn that God divided up the nations at the Tower of Babel. They were allotted to the sons of God. Now those sons of God are not men. It's the same sons of God in Genesis six. The sons of God saw the daughters of men and they took wives. Now, that concept blows my mind, but it's in our Bible. So, so I ask questions, why would God allow that? Why didn't God just throw them all in hell? Why doesn't God come down and wipe them out? I don't know. But it's just, it's just the way it is. So let's, let's follow. Um, back to, uh, more broadly, the idea derives from when we learn that when God divided up the nations at the Tower of Babel, they were allotted to the sons of God, fallen angels. The nations of the world were in fact disinherited by Yahweh as his own earthly family. Immediately after Babel, Yahweh called Abraham and the nation of Israel was created. Israel was therefore Yahweh's portion, whereas all the other nations belonged to the sons of God whom Israel was forbidden to worship. As a result, Israel was holy ground. The territory of every other nation was not. Let me read that statement again. As a result, Israel was holy ground. The territory of every other nation was not holy. The rest of the Old Testament is the story of God's intention to reclaim every nation on earth. Now here is the gospel. Here is the reason for the gospel. At the Tower of Babel, the entire world is following Nimrod. They are worshiping the Antichrist. They are worshiping a spirit possessing a man. They are worshiping pagan gods. They are wor-, they are saying, let us make a name for ourselves. Let's, let's war against Jehovah. Let's build a tower lest that evil god floods the earth again. Let's, let's do our own thing. They are, they are warring against God. Now, when they are scattered, some scholars say that they are scattered to seventy different uh, uh, um, tongues, that seventy different dialects were derivative of Babel. Seventy different nations. There's an argument for thirty-five, but there are different nations from the Tower of Babel. Those people at Babel, when God says he comes down and he looks at the city and he looks at the tower, he already gauged their heart. There's not a single person on earth outside of Shem's family. There's not a single person at the Tower of Babel that worships God. So God says, all these nations of the world, they don't worship me. So fine, let's give them what they want. Let's divide them up. So he divides the people up to an inheritance to the fallen angels that are ruling different territories on planet earth. Now, when you fast forward, when you take that concept and you fast forward to the life of Jesus Christ, Jesus Christ's inheritance, Psalms two, and when he's in the desert being tempted by Lucifer, by Satan, his inheritance are the nations of the earth. Now, the nations of the earth at the Tower of Babel do not belong to God. They are chosen, they have chosen to follow Satan himself. Except one, his name is Shem. Him and his lineage are on the run. Now, Shem, uh, in, in your Bible, you can look, I, I put it in here uh, on your next page, it says Shem's descendants. You can read that for yourself. Shem's descendants are outlined in Genesis chapter eleven. And Shem has a great grandson named Terah. Terah has a son named Abram. Now let's grasp planet earth at this time. Babel has been shut down. Men and women have separated to different regions of the world. They are now talking different languages. They are still following pagan gods. They're still worshiping fallen angels. They're still worshiping this god named Nimrod, his wife named Samiris and their son named Horus. They're still worshiping this false trinity, this false representation of God the Father, uh, um, uh, and, and Jesus the Son, and they've mixed in there, the queen of the universe. Uh, um, this, this queen, uh, that they worship. They are following the same religion, but now they're scattered. Now, when we look at different names for Nimrod, when we look at different names for Samiris, when we look for different names for their baby that, that the world is worshiping, we find all these pagan names from different dialects, different cultures, different countries around the world. They all are referencing the same person Nimrod at the Tower of Babel. So as they are scattered, they start to call him different names. Marduk, uh, Osiris, Baal, um, uh, Aphrodites, Asher, they, they start a Molak, uh, um, Isis, Osiris, all these different names that are still part of secret societies today, still part of religions today, um, pagan religions. They all are referencing the Tower of Babel. They're all calling Nimrod by a different name, but they're talking about the same person. So as God looks at his earth, he realizes that there's not anybody on earth, there's no nation on earth that follows him. There's no nation on earth that declares that Yahweh, Jehovah is their god. But there is one man on earth that's disrupting things. Now, here is where it gets good. Look on your notes, it says Terah's descendants. Um, I'll just, I'll just, uh, Terah is, is Shem's great grandson. It's on that little graph I showed you. Um, just real quick, uh, in, I believe it's chapter twelve, verse twenty-seven, is that right? No, chapter eleven still, uh, chapter eleven, verse twenty-seven. This is the genealogy of Terah. Terah begat Abram. Uh, no, no Nahor and Haran. Haran begat Lot. Uh, they lived in a place called the Ur of the Chaldeans. Here's the thing, there wasn't a nation that followed God. But there was one man named Abram. Now, when we talk about extra biblical books that have historical information, um, we can learn that through some history that Abram went into his father's tent. His dad was a, a god maker. Abram goes into his father's tent, destroys his gods while his dad is out. His dad comes home and says, who destroyed my gods? Abram's kinda smirking in the corner saying, well, ask them, they'll tell you. And he says, they can't talk, they're just wood, they're just stone. He says, well then why do you pray to them? And so Abram stood up to his dad's worship of these false gods. God, Jehovah sees Abrams discussed with man-made gods and goddesses and says, I'll use that man to build my nation. So when God comes down to Babel and he's looking around the city and he's looking around the tower, he's not doing a, an investigation of great mankind, uh, ability to build things. He's gauging hearts. And he looks around the earth and he sees one guy named Abram who stands up against these false gods. And he says, you know what? There's no nation that will follow me. I'll make my own nation. So the cool thing is the Israelite nation, the Jewish people, the Hebrew nation, they did not come from Babel. They came from God. They came from one man named Abram. That's where he gets the name Father Abraham. God later changes Abram to Abraham, Sarai to Sarah. He fills them with his Holy Spirit. But that's when we get to the Abraham covenant, where God makes a deal with Abraham and he says, Abraham, I'll bless those that bless you. I'll curse those that curse you. You'll have more children than there are stars in the heaven, sands on the sea. And he makes this covenant with Abraham, knowing that Abraham can't keep the covenant. He can't, he, he, he can't fulfill it. God upholds both ends of the agreement. So what I want you to grasp out of this tonight is that Babel produced pagan nations. God could find no nation to serve him, so he found a man and made his own nation. This is the birth of Israel. This is the birth of the Jewish people. This is the birth of God's chosen ones. So now the rest of your Old Testament takes you from Babel to the birth of a nation and how God takes this nation and brings the Messiah through the nation. That nation was started with Abram and he is a descendant of Shem, which is Noah's son from the ark. His, Shem's dad Noah is the tenth generation from Adam. So we can trace Jesus all the way back to Adam via Noah, via Shem, via Abram, via Jacob, Isaac, all, all the patriarchs of the Old Testament. That's the power of this Jewish nation. That's the birth. This is the birthing of the nation. Um, we're not gonna be able to cover everything that's in our notes tonight, but you can read through those and get a little more information on the nation of Israel. Now, let's go to your notes where it says territory in the nation of Israel. What I really wanna focus on at this point is territory. Territory physically and spiritually is vital to the kingdom of God. Now, when we look at Genesis one, Genesis, uh, one twenty-eight, God tells Adam and Eve, go forth, be fruitful, multiply. In other words, don't just live in the garden. Take the message of God's word around the earth. Hey Adam, you've got a six, six day lease, a six thousand year lease on this planet earth. I'm gonna come back on the seventh day or the seven thousandth year and judge your progress. Adam blows it. He gives the deed to Satan. God restores it. The mandate's still the same. Go forth, be fruitful, multiply. Genesis three, Adam and Eve, it's, 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 it's not funny, but it's interesting verbiage. So God drove them out. They did not wanna leave the garden. Um, Genesis eight, Noah and his family, go out of the ark. Go forth, be fruitful, multiply. Um, Jesus tells us in the New Testament, go forth. Uh, eh, go forth, making disciples, baptizing them in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Cast out demons, drink deadly poison, step on the head of serpents, take authority, go take the gospel. We built a religion around, hey, y'all come to church. Jesus never says, come to church. He says, go, go be the church. And so, so this idea of taking territory is monumental. Now, let's, let's say this, let's summarize the Old Testament. This is a great way to summarize the Old Testament. Out of Babel comes approximately seven nations. I mean seventy nations. And those nations do not worship God. They are pagan nations. We see the Egyptian empire. We see the Philistines, the Amorites, the Peserites, the Hittites, all these different cultures. We see Nebuchadnezzar, we see, uh, Rome, we see all of these cultures, kingdoms, nations. All through the Old Testament, not a single one of them wants to follow God, considers Yahweh their god. They all are worshiping pagan idols, false gods, from Dagon to Baal to Moloch to Asher, all these different gods and goddesses. All those gods and goddesses are the same Nimrod and his wife and his son, their son at Babel. It's all the same worshiping of the Antichrist. All through the Old Testament, we see all of these other nations on the wor-, in the world, on the earth trying to destroy God's people. They're constantly warring against this little band of Jewish people. They're enslaving them. They are attacking them. They are fighting against them. They're, they hate them. But all the while, this Jewish people is preserved by God. These Jewish people cannot be annihilated off the planet earth. They cannot, uh, uh, just, nobody can destroy them. The only way to be part of God's kingdom is to join and become an Israelite, become Jewish. At the birth of Christ, the ministry of Christ, this is where the New Testament gets really, um, interesting. Because when we watch the life of Christ, I grew up, and maybe you, maybe you have a different perspective. I grew up just thinking that Jesus just kinda randomly walked around town, healing people, teaching people, doing great miracles, doing great things. Kinda just to show that he's God, to show that he's the Messiah. But it makes more sense as I've started to really learn this, that Jesus was on a mission. And his mission was to take back the nations of the earth through the only nation that followed him. Now, the only nation that followed Jesus is the Jewish nation. What the Jewish nation wanted, what Judas wanted, what Peter wanted, Matthew, Bartholomew, all the disciples, what all the Jewish nation wanted, they, they could not wait till God sent the Messiah. And they wanted the Messiah to raise a physical army of Jewish so- soldiers to destroy Rome, then to go forth and destroy all their enemies that have persecuted them for two thousand years. So they were waiting for a physical army, now grasp this, to subdue and take over the nations of the world and to destroy the nation gods and goddesses that all these different nations worshipped. Now, all through the Old Testament, God told his people, don't marry somebody of another nation. Don't intermingle with business of other people. They serve gods that aren't your god. God wasn't, uh, worried about skin color. He wasn't worried about racism. He's worried about spiritually mixing the wrong spirits with the wrong spirits. He's not talking about physical color. But the Jewish people that wanted this Messiah to rule the world. They really, remember the disciples, hey Jesus, can I sit on your right hand? Can I, can, when we enter the kingdom, can I be, can I, can I be your- Can I, can, when we enter the kingdom, can I be, can I, can I be your number one soldier, can I, can I sit right next to you? And God's like, you have no idea what my kingdom's about. I'm not here to physically dominate all the different empires. And with swords and, and, and bow and arrows and, and chariots and horses. But what I am here to do is to establish my kingdom. Now Jesus tells Pontius Pilate, my kingdom is not of this world. If you knew who I was, you wouldn't be talking or treating me this way, Pontius Pilate. But because you have no idea who the real king in the room is, you think that you have control over me. But you, you only have the control that my father gives you, because my father is the king of all kings, the lord of all lords. So when Jesus was on the earth for his three and a half year ministry, this is what he did. He would walk through Samaria, he went to the Samaritans. And he would heal the lady at the well. He would go into the tombs in the region of the Gaderins. Or, or the, the region of Caesarea Philippi. And he would rule over this fallen angel or the demon or the spirit. That ruled that territory. So when Jesus would enter into a different region. He was taking over that world, he was taking over that kingdom. He didn't physically overthrow the king that physically sat on the throne. He spiritually overthrew the fallen angel that had rooted territorial domain over that space. Here's some examples, Lu- uh uh Luke chapter ten on your notes. After these things, the Lord appointed seventy others also. And he sent them two by two before his face into every city and place where he himself was about to go. Jesus sent thirty-five different groups of two to different regions and cities. To overthrow and to sto- uh to prepare the ground for his word to come and overtake that fallen angel. That territory, John four, Jesus, he left Judea and departed, and departed again to Galilee. Verse four, but he needed to go through Samaria. He needed to go through Samaria, why? Cause there was just a Samaritan there? No, because he was ruling over the fallen angel territory. He is dominating demonic power that had ruled and reigned since the Tower of Babel over this region called Samaria. And how dare this little Jewish Messiah boy named Jesus walk through being a threat. To the ruling spirit of that territory. So when Jesus walked through Samaria, when he sent out his teams of thirty-five missionaries to different regions, places and cities. He's not just spreading the gospel, he is dominating the spirit. Or the fallen angel that had ruled and reigned over that region for two thousand years. He is destroying and overthrowing Satan and his minions' rule and dominion of planet earth. Look at Matthew eight, when he had come to the other side, to the country of the Gerasenes. He saw two demon-possessed men coming out of the tombs exceedingly fierce, this is Matthew eight, verse twenty-eight. So that no one could pass that way, and suddenly they cried out, what have you to do with this, Jesus, the son of God? Who's talking here, demons are talking here. He says, have you come to torment us before the time? They're, they're, listen, when Jesus would walk through territories. Zip codes, cities, uh city limits, county, you know, we, we're all divided by zip codes. Counties, cities, states, nations. Well, if Texas was divided, if there was a Tower of Babel in the center of Texas. And Texas was divided into thirty-five or seventy different regions. And Jesus, when he's the Messiah, says, I've come to rule over Texas. He, all he has to do is walk through and start to heal people who are under the oppression of a fallen angel or a spiritual domain. And Jesus says, hey listen, I'm not worried about your little ragtag uh army over here, I'm gonna super, superpower. I'm gonna overthrow the demonic entity. That's been ruling here for two thousand years. Matthew sixteen is powerful, you can't study this passage enough. When Jesus came to the region of Caesarea Philippi. He goes into the heart of demon territory, fallen, he goes to Mount Hermon. And that's where he says, Peter, who do people say that I am? Hey guys, and J- and Peter says, you're the son of God, the, the Messiah. He says, nobody gave you that information but God myself. Hey listen, the gates of hell behind me on this mountain, they can't withstand me. So as Jesus would walk through different territories, he destroyed the powers over those territories. Now, the question begs to go, well obviously Jesus didn't walk every square inch of planet earth. No, he didn't, that's why the day of Pentecost, think about this, Acts chapter one. Jesus tells his twelve disciples, do not go and spread the gospel. Okay, well what he wants to do, I want you to wait in Jerusalem, wait for the power of the Holy Spirit. So the same power that walked with Jesus now was given to the church on the day of Pentecost. And from the day of Pentecost till today and until the return of Christ. We have power to now go to Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, the uttermost ends of the earth. See, if the twelve disciples had gone before they got the spirit. They could have preached, they could have started orphanages, they would have fed the homeless. They would have opened up some seminaries, done really good Bible studies, the best Bible studies you've ever been a part of. They would have given you more information about Jesus than any scholar alive today. But they would not have had the power of the spirit to overthrow the power of the fallen angel. That had been given territorial rulership of a people who refused to follow God. They would have never been able to overthrow them, but when they got the spirit of God. They were then able to go and dominate the spiritual oppression over God's people. And now people from Samaria, now people from uh the Philistine country. Now people from the Roman Empire, now people from all across the globe, despite where they're born. Can now come into the family of Christ. You don't have to live in Israel today, you don't have to become a Jewish person. And observe all the regiments of Old Testament law. You just have to come under the authority and the rule and the reign of Jesus Christ. Now what does this have to do with end times? We'll pick this up, but Satan is still here, fallen angels are still here. Fallen angels still rule over different territories of planet earth. That is why you can look around the world and see different strongholds, different patterns, different spiritual problems. But the entire world has this oppression of the enemy over them. But in every nation on planet earth, and hear this, in every nation, in Iran today. In Iraq today, in Afghanistan today, in Israel today, in Egypt today, in Syria today. Guam, Zambia, Roatan, Honduras, Austin, Texas, America, Mexico, Canada. There is a group of believers who make up the nation of God. The nation of God, the kingdom of God is alive and well. Just because you're born Jewish does not mean that you are God's child. You've got to be born again, Nicodemus. Nicodemus, one must be born again, I know Nicodemus, that you're a pure-blooded Jew. And you're the best of the Sanhedrin, man, you are the, you're the Dombo- the bomb dot com, man, you got all the laws down. Man, you're a really good religious person, but you gotta be born again, well born into what, into my kingdom. Hey Cameron, I know you're American and America's God's country, the red, white, blue one, and God we trust. And those, those evil people in that country over there, they just, they just need to be blown off the face of the earth, cause they hate you. No, they need Jesus, just like me, I need Jesus, just cause I'm American doesn't make me Christian. Just cause I'm of this country doesn't make me of that religion. We all gotta be born into the nation of God, it's called the body of Christ, it's called the family of God. So what Jesus did was not just come and, and do some good little deeds here and there. He's teaching his people how to take dominion of planet earth. And our mandate today is to go forth. Because the enemy's still building his Tower of Babel. The enemy is still getting people to bow and worship and fuel the fires of hell. God says, listen, you give me one, I'll build my nation. You give me two, you give me three, you give me twelve, I'll change the world. Oh yeah, one of them will deny me, I'll replace him, we'll change the world. God's calling you. He's calling us out as a church to still go forth, be fruitful, multiply. Share the gospel, God bless you, thank you so much. Next week, we're gonna pick up uh in our notes, the struggle, the spiritual struggle. Jezebel against Elijah, the spirit of the Antichrist against the Holy Spirit. We're gonna pick up on this cosmic battle. But I hope we've at least um scrapped, s- scraped the surface of this idea of physical territory. Physically, God wants you to take dominion. He wants you to physically go walk the state capital and pray for our, our elected officials. He wants you to physically go to that side of town, I don't know what that side of town, I don't know where that side of town is. But he wants you to go there and walk the territory and claim the physical land. Quit saying, oh, that's the bad part of town, if that's the bad part of town. Then go take the light of the gospel of Jesus Christ and change it into the holy part of town. Go forth church, go forth, take territory. God bless you, we'll see you next time, uh next Tuesday, six thirty, Sunday, uh right here live. Uh at eleven AM, God bless you, have a great evening.